At the entrance to the room, additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carl L. Wardman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to the address of the planning commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Mr. Sabat, the roll call, please.
Mr. Apahedion, here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Krent.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Senzika.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
We did hear from Mr. Hudson, and he said he was not able to be here today this evening. Due to his wife's 70th birthday. The first item is the approval of the agendas or a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the zoning board appeals meeting, notice it's not the agenda.
I just had a quick conversation about a minute ago regarding the ZBA update, the DDA update, and planning update. Planning report not on there.
Want to add those?
Yes.
Okay, we're good, we'll add them.
We approve the agenda with those items included.
One second. And who seconded?
I seconded.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Senzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Apahedion.
Yes.
So...
So 3A, 3B, 3C.
Okay, 3A is the...
3A, BZA.
BZA report.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, we do the minutes first. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as published? Ms. Cooper, seconded by Ms. Cruz.
I'll write as fast as Kathy does.
You noticed that.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Senzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Apahedion.
Yes.
Next is a ZBA report.
ZBA report.
Yes, yeah, good evening. I'd like to report there were three items on the agenda for the meeting on the 21st. The first item was a variance request from David Pardon at 1321 Boyd Street to split a parcel land into two parcels, a 305 square foot variance from the 7,500 square foot requirement minimum for lot sizes. And as it turned out, we questioned Paul Evans on the meeting prior to that where they had two tie votes for approval and dial. And as I understand, as suggested by Mr. Hudson, that if it's a tie vote, it fails. So that motion did fail in the previous minute and it was taken off the agenda.
Okay.
Another variance was requested by Ellie Sasson at 6022 Atkins on order to build a new house, 25-foot variance from the 50-foot corret setback from Square Lake Road. The setback was measured from the future Square Lake Road right away. And in that case, the variance was approved. It was an eyes-shaped lot. As it turned out, they considered the shape of the lot and the alignment of the homes down the road and they did approve the variance. And the last variance was at Joel and Scott Pett at 3521 Shakespeare order to construct a two-story addition to a house. The six-foot variance was required for a 45-foot rear yard setback. And that also was approved. It's a regular shaped lot. So that was it for the zoning board meeting on the 21st.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Senzika? If not, we'll move on to 3B.
3B, the DDA report.
Yes.
There was a meeting April 15th, Downtown Development Authority, and there were three items of new business. One was the approval of the 2015-2016 DDA budget. And coincidentally enough, Tom Darling and Mark Miller, who's actually here this evening, presented that. The second item was the update of Troy Rose Rock 2. Coincidentally enough, Kirk Bovensee, who was the Public Works Manager, presented that. And the third item was the planning and development report, which yours truly presented. So if you have any questions on those items, we can answer them.
Yes, Mr. Rob.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I make a comment about the DDA?
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't know if everyone knows, but our DDA had severe financial problems due to the reduction of property values. And last year, the DDA and city council approved revisions to what's called the Development and TIF Plan. TIF stands for Taxicap Financing. And they eliminated the properties that had fallen below the base value because you capture the base and up. And by taking those out of the plan, we were able to have positive capture. And then by, the bonds which were being paid were what were called naked bonds and very rare for a DDA in Michigan. It was just on the full faith and credit of the DDA, not the city. But in this new scheme, the city then floated bonds with a full faith and credit AAA bond rating. And we had projected that with the revenue projections that the DDA would not be able to afford maintenance of the median and the right-of-way areas between the sidewalks. But after the first year where property values are going in new development, they're able to do that. So it's been a very successful endeavor.
Great. Excuse me, did they resell the bonds? Did they recall?
No, they actually paid off the DDA bonds and then floated out new bonds from the city pledging the revenues from the DDA with the city's AAA bond rating.
So they probably got substantial savings on the interest rate.
Yes, yes.
That's great. Are there any planning commission members who don't know Mr. Miller or Mr. Bovensee? Thank you.
I was gonna introduce both of them before the next thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark Miller, if you already know Mark, he's economic and community development director. And Kirk Bovensee was the Public Works Manager, both here to observe and participate in discussion this evening on this next topic.
Thank you. Okay, item four is the public comment for items not on the agenda, seeing no one there in the audience. We'll move on to the study item number five. Mr. Chairman, please forgive me. Was there a planning agenda, planning report from Mr. Sabat?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Mr. Chairman, you gotta keep me honest.
I was late.
The next item that you'll be seeing is Sandalwood South Site Condominium. Some of you may remember this. There was an application to rezone a piece of property years ago. The Bender Rezoning Market, remember? You were involved in that lawsuit. There was litigation involved and there's a consent judgment that controls the use of the property. So the property's been sold to a developer that wishes to develop the site in conformance with the consent judgment. It's a 12-unit site condominium located on Rochester Road, on the west side of Rochester Road, north of Long Lake. There's an older home there now.
Yes.
And they're gonna keep the home and add 12 additional units on that property.
Will they back up to, will it just be a single street or on both sides?
It'll be, yeah, it's a double-loaded road, but it's single-loaded in some areas. And there's detentions located at the western end of it. So it serves as a buffer between that development and the single-family property to the west.
So will we see that?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the consent judgment, the planning commission reviews it and approves the site plan.
Then maybe do we need a vote on each of those items or not?
Just reports.
Okay, okay. Then number five is the potential regulations for woodland protection.
Yep.
I don't know who's gonna kick us off, but...
Well, I'll kick it off. This is meant to be, this is a study meeting. We're intended to have open and easy-flowing dialogue. But without structure, it just becomes ineffective. So we put together a PowerPoint to kind of inform everyone of where we're at and then use the PowerPoint to lead discussion in terms of where we want to go. Again, as I noted, Mark and Kurt are also here and they're knowledgeable about tree preservation and knowledgeable about, you know, what ordinances we have now and development in the city. So they'll be able to link to the discussion as well. So I encourage this to be a true study item. And we're focusing, of course, on woodland protection in Troy. March 24th, 2015, in this very room, the planning commission passed this resolution that staff explore developing the beginnings of a tree ordinance and wetlands ordinance for new developments. Come back to planning commission with the presentation. And that's what we're here to do this evening, is to do that. One thing we did want to do though, and I've had dialogue with both the chairman and the vice chairman on this, to facilitate moving forward in a timely fashion. It's staff's recommendation that we actually divide woodland protection and wetland protection. They are related and we understand that. But I think to facilitate moving forward in an effective way, it would be beneficial to separate the two and focus on woodland protection first and then come back later and then focus on wetland protection at a future date. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, it's good.
It just seems to make sense. Great, that was easier than I thought. So today, we've got landscape design and tree preservation standards that the zoning ordinance actually refer to. If you look in zoning, it's mentioned in, I think, one place. And it's a little misleading in terms of the title. Tree preservation standards, as you all know, we really don't have that. What this document requires is that a tree inventory is required for site plans. And the developer prepares a tree inventory, identify trees on the site, their location, species. But they're required only to identify trees that are four to 10 inches in caliber, the DBH, which is diameter measured at rest height, which is about four and a half feet off the ground. The thinking being, at the time that this was written, and it was years ago, if it's less than four inches, they're really not significant trees. And if they're greater than 10 inches, they're more mature and they've got less of a chance to survive with development and et cetera. So that was kind of the reasoning, so that's what they're required to show. The ordinance, as you know, does not restrict tree kind of and does not require buffering of any type. So it's really a tree identification and removal ordinance, if you really want to get, it's standard, it's not an ordinance, it's standards.
But, Brent, it does have landscaping standards in it too, though.
It's got standards related to tree preservation plans, preliminary tree preservation plans that have to be submitted, and final tree preservation plans to be submitted. But I don't think it's got actual...
Yeah, it does, it has for landscaping. And that's part of the problem, the issue, is that it conflicts with...
It does, but it references zoning districts that aren't even around anymore.
Yeah.
So it hasn't been updated based on the new ordinance.
Very dated. So in terms of the zoning ordinance, we do have regulations in the zoning ordinance that apply to commercial or multifamily developments. This is in addition to the last document we talked about. So for commercial multifamily developments, there is a 20% open space requirement. 20% of the property has to be pervious material, not parking lot, drive, and building. There's a requirement for greenbelt trees. There's a requirement for parking lot trees. I believe there's one space every eight, one tree every eight spaces. And there's also landscape buffering required, depending on what type of use is proposed and what the abutting properties are. So there are requirements that mandate that there's at least some landscaping entries on the site. But in terms of one and two-family residential developments, that's the R1A through E and the RT, the only requirements in terms of landscaping are street trees, and those are for interior. So if you've got a major mile road, the interior street that comes off the major mile road, that's an interior street. So there's street trees required in front of the house. And there's also greenbelt trees for that portion of the development that fronts on a major road. Those are the only trees that are actually required in a single-family residential development, like pinyery woods, which we reviewed and approved at the last month. So now we're gonna talk about woodland protection options. And, you know, Ben, feel free to, we're gonna, what we said we do is contacting him, although Ben's been imitating in Marcell Marcell right now, so.
You're doing great, Brent.
So there was a memo that was prepared as part of this meeting this evening. And it really kind of laid out three options. A woodland map, a woodland ordinance, and amend the landscape provisions in the zoning ordinance. And these are just three options for you to consider to address your resolution of March 24th. So we'll talk about each of these in order here. First is a woodland map. It identifies in maps woodland areas. And as part of the map, you have to provide an actual definition of what a woodland is. The memo that was prepared references Novi's ordinance, which is considered one of the more stringent ordinances in southeast Michigan. And I'll just read you the definition for a woodland area. It means all lands, including all trees, shrubs, and ground cover thereon, regardless of size, as designated on the regulated wetland map. Woodlands areas are identified by such factors as soil quality, habitat quality, tree species and diversity, health and vigor of tree stand, understory species and quality, presence of wildlife, and other factors such as the value of the woodland area as a scenic asset, wind block, noise buffer, healthy environment, and the value of historic or specimen trees. So there's a lot of information goes into formulating what exactly, how to define this woodland area.
Just really quick, one of the problems with woodlands, once you map it, it changes over time.
Yeah, so this is a portion of the Novi, the regulated woodlands in Novi. You see the key here, everything in green is a woodland, you know, there's significant stance of regular woodlands in the city of Novi. So in terms of pros and cons, for pros, again, you can see that those areas, at least from, you know, at this scale, are clearly defined. Where the woodlands are is actually absolutely clearly defined. So you've got reasonable assurances regarding protection because it's mapped. You see it on the map, it's public information. So everyone's on the same page in terms of what the requirements are moving forward. And it also, it takes like a thousand-yard view of it and it handles woodlands throughout the whole community at the same. It considers it as a whole versus dealing with woodlands and trees on a kind of a parcel-by-parcel basis and application-by-application basis. Those are pros. In terms of cons, it takes considerable amount of time and expense to do that mapping. I mean, that's a significant, dramatic undertaking. I can't imagine how much they spent to do that.
So they paid a consultant to do that?
Well, I would imagine, I would imagine. In terms of interpretation of boundaries, again, the scale, you're looking at that from a thousand yards up in the air. When you start getting down and walking it, you know, the interpretation of where exactly the boundaries begin and end when you get down to the ground level, it may come into play. And as Mark indicated, changing conditions, windstorms, lightning, disease, age, you know, all these human factor. All these different things could lead to changing conditions. So I would bet that, I mean, Kurt's an actual horticulturist, you know, you'd have to amend, revisit this map every, you know, five or 10 years, I would think, right, Kurt?
Yes.
So, good answer.
Not many communities go as far as Novi with the woodland map. They're one of the few that I never actually do that. So it's the more, I don't say extreme, but the more conservative route of all the options.
Novi also is not as nearly built out as Troy is either. Correct?
No, it's not. I live out there. In fact, you could have seen my house on that one map. I live in the southwest corner of West Woonfield Township. And Novi's west end is not built out. But West Woonfield, who has probably a stronger wetlands ordinance, much more complex, is built out as Troy.
Yeah, we're not recommending this, we're just talking about options displayed, so.
And just, I'm experiencing that right now. They're redoing our woodlands map. And I live on a preserved woodland and a wetland, so it's a forested wetland. And it's preserved in perpetuity and it's in the subdivision. So the line, when you, I tried to compute it, you know, I looked at it. The line, when you look at and then you go in the field, on the map, comes out to like 10 feet when you go out there. So I honestly can't tell. So then you'll have to have foresters interpret that when it comes time to develop, when you have a woodlands map.
That gets back to the expense, time and expense.
And potential litigation, too.
Sure. So cons, time and expense. Did I already talk about this? I did. Okay, woodland ordinance. Excuse me. So woodland ordinance, and again, the memo references Novi. And we wanted to really focus on kind of a thousand-yard view of this. And I didn't provide an ordinance, but I can certainly provide it if you want. I didn't want the details of this to bog us down. Because I think at this point, we're talking conceptual level before we get into the dial-in of the details. But a woodland ordinance can preserve, protect, or mitigate woodland and tree removal. And just to, so we're all on the same page, preserving is just what it sounds like. There's trees that are identified and you can't touch them. They're to be preserved. And if you do touch them, if you do want to remove a tree that's preserved, you have to seek permission. And if you cut it down without permission, you get penalized. Protecting, again, pretty self-explanatory. Mitigating, if you do want to cut trees down, you've got to replace them, either one-for-one or whatever the ratio will come up with. And the level that you want, the community wants to go really depends on the desire and the, you know, community values and what have you. So it's, you know, scale of one to 10, it really depends on where you want to go. And a woodland ordinance can incorporate a woodland map as part of the ordinance. So again, pros, you can really dial in in terms of where you want to take the community in terms of woodland protection. You could be as comprehensive as you want. Novi's ordinance is 21 pages. Phil sent me a copy of, or a link to Rochester Hills. It's about 12, 14 pages. You can, depending on what, how you want to do, you can preserve, you can mitigate. Again, it comes back to community values. And you can, to have an effective ordinance, you've got to have enforcement, laws to enforce when there's violations.
I'll give you the example, around where I live, people are always building decks. Especially if they're, some communities will do, they'll have a woodland and then you'll have a setback, an environmental setback, and they tend to encroach their yards into those environmental setbacks. And then they get caught after the fact.
Do they technically, according to the ordinance, have to come to the city for a permit to do that?
Yeah, anytime you're impacting, if there's an environmental setback, yes. Because some of the ordinances will have, they'll map the woodland and then say you have to have a certain amount of setback from that woodland, maybe. But it's not unusual for people to say, I don't like to not understand the regulations and then cut down some trees because it was too shaded or something. I mean, I've had neighbors do that and then get caught after the fact.
So in terms of cons, you've really got to put a lot of effort up front in terms of determining how this is to apply. Like what types of parcels does this apply to? Is it across the board, every parcel in the city? Does it apply to existing single-family residential development, commercial, just development applications? Is it based on size of parcel, how many trees are on the parcel? These are all different factors that go into, you know, coming up with the language for the wetlands ordinance. It may limit development potential. When you start to talk about preserving existing trees, that could have an impact on how many units that you can develop in a parcel. Talking about site condominiums, if you're allowed to clearcut, you can max out the development potential based on ordinance. If you have to start preserving trees, by definition, that's going to limit the return that developers are going to get once we make this change compared to what they do today. If you're not as heavy-handed and we don't go into as much preservation, but it's more tree replacement or buffering, that's going to add expense. So if we start looking at more innovative stormwater detention, instead of very hard drains, we do front, we do, you know, we do stormwater mains in the front. We have leads that come in and go through, between the buildings towards the back. That's more expensive, the increase of the cost per unit for development. So that's just things to consider, but we're just talking about pros and cons. It can add time for development approval. If you have to go before a woodland preservation board and have a public hearing or a meeting, you get postponed and you have a couple meetings, that adds time and which therefore adds cost and adds risk to development. So just things to think about. And as Mark indicated earlier, we may have, depending on how far, how involved you get and how detailed you get, you may have to hire a consultant as a forester or a horticulturist or hire a full-time staff member to deal with this. Again, it depends on how far down that road we go, how involved we get. Our third option is to amend the landscape standards in the zoning ordinance. And this goes back to the two slides I talked about for 20% open space and some of the things that we, the provisions that we have in our toolbox today for requiring open space and trees. So if we take an approach of handling the issue of trees and woodlands in the ordinance, this will probably focus more on providing new landscaping versus preserving and protecting what's there. It would be, so if you look at it in terms of, look at, again, the resolution talked about single-family developments. If you treated a single-family development like we do, commercial developments, there'd be a buffering requirement, just like we do. Right now, there's no buffering requirement. So even though we've got compatible uses, single-family, potentially extra single-family, there would be a buffer requirement to protect property values, to be, to provide, you know, sound and visual buffers between units and that type of reasoning. And, excuse me. Oh, great. And we could establish increased minimum landscape requirements as part of this. In terms of pros, this approach would probably be less restrictive than a woodland ordinance. Again, a woodland that can involve protection and preservation. It's predictable, if we treat it like we do in our ordinance, excuse me. There's actually a formula. You can easily figure it out easily based on the type of use and, you know, the distance of the property line. It's very predictable and anyone can figure it out. We've already got the processes and the structure in place. We have the zoning ordinance, we have the planning commission, we have our site plan review process. It's already there. And it really involves more buffering and more landscaping. So it's a fairly, fairly simple modification theoretically. In terms of cons, if the planning commission's direction is to preserve more, you know, this focus would, the tools really aren't in place now in our zoning ordinance for preservation. We have to do some more heavy lifting. And again, it would potentially increase development costs. Right now, if you don't have to plant any trees and we make this change, you have to plant more trees, it's, you know, simply the cost goes up. So here's where the dialogue starts, in terms of considerations for this evening. Two main questions is, one, what is the goal and intent of the planning commission with the resolution? And two, where do we apply these provisions that we come up with? So there's really, there's three possible areas we can look at in terms of woodland protection. We can look at protection and preservation, so if there are... We can look at protection and preservation. So if there are existing trees on the site, how do we preserve them? If we decide to preserve them, how do we protect them during the development process? Because there are trees, um, when, when, when there's development on a parcel, there's trees that you wanna preserve, there's stress based on the grading and, and the, uh, you know, machinery work and, and, and all these, these different things, different things going on that can negatively impact a tree and can, can lead to that tree over time not surviving.
There are ways to mitigate.
There are, there are ways to. It's, it's, with, with, the smaller the lot, the more difficult, more challenging it is to preserve a tree. We've got a lot of smaller lots here where, where it's very much a challenge to do so. The second I, I mentioned earlier is mitigation. So if you've got a tree that's, that's, a site that's got so many trees on it, you can measure how many trees and how many, how many, uh, how many inches you've got of, of trees total, and you can mitigate. So you can say, you know, if there's a site that has 10 trees, uh, you can, and you cut down on those 10 trees, you have to mitigate those trees and put them elsewhere on the site to a certain ratio, one to one or 50% or whatever that ratio is. So you're not preserving and protecting all the trees on the site, but you're replacing certainly a, a portion of those trees, if not all those trees. Or, and the third is, is, is increased landscaping. So really looking at it as more of a buffering between, between developments and between properties.
Right.
Yep.
Do we have a map that shows us what is left in the city where we would apply any of these options? Like, how much more land is there really to be developed that, that we would have to worry about protecting or mitigating or working with what we have? Does that make sense?
That's a really good question. Cause that, that's still, that's my primary goal too here is that, you know, what are we talking about? I always hear us say, you know, we're 95% built out or 98% built out in terms of development. Are we really?
That's a, that's a, it's a difficult number to come up with, and let me tell you why. You see the applications we're getting, we're getting recently. And it's, it's creative developers that are, they're buying a lot on a, on a, on a road. It's kind of a keyhole to the back. And they're buying up numerous backyards. So even though the, the property's not vacant per se, there's a house on the property, but it's rather fairly deep, the backyards are undeveloped. So it, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to kind of dial in a little bit to make a determination of what that, what the total, uh, potential is. Should I buy? Should pull up? Does everyone understand what I'm talking about in terms of the backyard?
Deep backyard.
Yeah, so.
How do you buy up a backyard if someone already, I mean, someone owns the backyard, right?
You split it off. That's what we, like, um, with Pinery Woods.
Right.
Pinery Woods.
For all backyards, they split off and create new lots out of it.
The gentleman who's, one of the gentlemen who spoke said he was paid $30,000 for his backyard. He said that probably.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I didn't quite get that entirely, but okay. So if you've got a really deep lot, you can take the back 20 yards of your lot and sell it to the, okay.
I think, um, not to pick on Mondrian, but Pinery Woods was backyards. The ones off the Lamb Road were backyards. And there's people coming to the counter, they're, they're dealing with neighbors and they're, I mean, that's, that's, so the, the reason is, all the easy, you know, there was a time, I can pull up historic aerials, where we were mostly farmers' fields.
Right.
Those, if there's a, if there's a vacant lot, that's, that's a couple acres in size and it's vacant, it's vacant for a reason.
Okay.
For a very good reason.
All right, then let me ask you this. If, if builders are coming in and they're being creative and they're buying up backyards, and we talk about these different ordinances and changes in the law, is that really new development or is that expansion of existing development?
It's new development.
It's, it's considered new development, even though all those backyards were part of an existing recognized subdivision. Okay.
Or a lot of, or a lot of those are meets, are just, are meets and bounds, where they're, they're, they front on a, on a road and they were just.
There are other area, residential areas that have the potential for redevelopment. There, I mean, how big is our small, largest lot size? It's about, what, third of an acre? But anyways.
Yeah.
About a third of an acre. We have certain subdivisions where they're acre plus size lots. So you could buy up five homes, do demolition and build 15 homes.
Right, right. What, what, I, my question is purely semantics, right? Cause I don't want, Alan, you know, I don't want someone to come in here and then argue, oh, but this isn't new. These aren't new. These were existing homes. This is not new development. It doesn't apply to my situation. It doesn't apply to my application.
Then they don't need site plan approval if it's not new.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we would tie it into site plan approval.
Well, even if it was an individual lot too, that's, it's still new.
It's new.
It's new. And here's a whole new piece of property.
You renovate, you do any renovation to a certain extent, you have to get a building permit. That's new.
Mark, could you, uh, I know you and I had a conversation, I think, uh, night, uh, at the financial ideas team, uh, afterwards. What's, uh, are, do we have examples of this going on already in the city of Troy? Like, I think you said something about Charmwood or?
Yeah, we've been getting some complaints up in Charmwood. If you're not familiar, that's the northwest corner of the city. And they're all big lots, an acre or larger. There are, a lot of them, the homes were built there before there were water and sewer, and now there is water and sewer in that whole area. And people are tearing down the modest homes cause they're 50, 60 years old. People didn't build a home. And they're building huge houses and they're clear-cutting individual lots. And it's, you know, Brent and I were looking at some of the aerial photography. It's just pretty dramatic because the character of the area is these homes with all these large trees and people, they're putting these massive sized homes on these lots. It's, it's incredible. And we're getting complaints. But some of their complaints are, are mitigated because they get to, maybe they can sell their home. Not that they want to, but they might. Oh yeah, that was an example we chose. That was interesting. For some reason, I can't.
You wanna expand?
It's weird.
Doesn't wanna fall away.
I've gotta push this off my screen, on this screen to get it up here. So anyways.
That's good.
Weird.
You can see that. So that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, now it's. All I wanna do is, is a little, this, I know Mark's hearing complaints, it's clear, I wanna do this. This is, this is before. I don't know what's wrong here. This is a before, okay? And notice, trees, here, I do this. Can't you hit the expand button, the upper right?
No, it's not.
No, it's off my, it's off my screen.
So use your mouse to go over there.
That's weird.
So this.
Okay, okay. So what should I do here? This is, this is today?
Go to the top right.
Yeah, hit that. There you go.
No, it's off his screen.
It's off my screen. Okay, that's fine.
This is that, your desk. We, uh, so you have two monitors.
Yeah, I got two monitors. But, so anyways, this, I can do this. So this is today. And this is what, this is, I'm gonna put up, this is two years ago. So watch, watch what happens here. So there was a lot of, there wasn't, it wasn't significantly covered in trees for this one. There's a lot of turf grass. It looks probably worse than it is because it's, it's an active construction site. But I can show you one that, that is significant. Let me do this. But what the residents are saying is that it's changing the character of their community because they've had all these trees mature on their lots and then all of a sudden, you know, you build out in, you know, there's no trees. So I actually spoke to the builder for this, cause I, someone complained. Is that one full of water? No, this is different. So this one, this is a different, different issue. This one, uh, they're saving a couple of trees here and it looks like it's been clear cut and I'm gonna go. Yeah, but did they protect those trees appropriately? I, I don't know. But I wanna show you before. So I, I said, what's, what's going on? You know, one of your neighbors is complaining. He says, this guy has a landscape plan that'll blow your mind. But I don't, this was a, this was just a re, a tear down and a rebuild. So we don't, I don't see it, we don't see it. I'm taking his word for it that there's a landscape plan, but according to him, he says, there's gonna be more trees on the site in the future than now. But this guy here and this guy here, they don't care about a landscape plan because, watch, watch how it looked before. There's a lot of hardwoods here. So he's gonna take all these, these hardwoods, cut them down, and he's gonna replace them with trees that obviously aren't as old, aren't as mature. Prob, different, different species, different character. So I'll take him at his words so that there's gonna be more landscaping here, but.
Are those greater than 10 inches?
They, they look pretty significant. They look pretty significant. So.
I, I think that we should look at the 10 inch, uh.
Yeah, I was gonna get back to, to your question about, or I guess it was Don's, where was the question about what we're trying to preserve? I think, um, there are different ways to define a wo, a woodland. Um, a lot of communities define a woodland as a quarter acre of continuous trees of over a certain size. Um, but there's also, we will also predict landmark trees, which are those trees that are 10 inches. So there might not be a whole lot of woodlands, depending on how we define it, but there're gonna be a lot of landmark trees that are still out there, which are 10 inches above, or, or it depends on the species with the size.
As long as, you, you only want preserved though if they're good health.
Running.
Right, right.
And of a certain species too.
Right.
Well, also I think it's the type of tree that you have, the species. That is the important thing. I mean, we should have a list of which ones we really wanna protect and which ones are scrubbed.
You can imagine why Mark gets phone calls. When someone gets up in the morning, goes to work and there's, there's, you know, 15 hardwoods on the lot next door, and they come home in the afternoon and it's clear, and it's gone. You mean, that, I, and it's a construction site, so it looks terrible to begin with. I mean, you can imagine why, you know, there's phone calls.
Right.
And they're residential sites.
They're at single, there's residential sites that, there's been nothing to change except the older home, that's 40 or 50 years old, however old, is demolished and a new larger home gets built in its place.
Is there any reason why we couldn't have a piece of each one of these things in the ordinance?
There's no reason at all.
Because I don't know if one versus another, I, I mean, I, cause I think there could be application for, I'd want the, the, the largest array of options that we have to, uh, apply to a particular site.
Yeah.
Sites.
Given, it's, it's, it's your, it's, it's planning commission's resolution, but we've, we've discussed this internally. Um, you know, I'll, I'll go to a word that, that I hear Mr. Stratt use a lot. It's a good word, flexibility. You know, no, no two sites are the same, no two approaches are the same. And I think it sounded to me, based on what we talked about, again, I'm not on the planning commission, but it sounded to me like the goal was to, to get a higher quality, not necessarily preserve every tree that's, 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 you know, from a scale of one to 10, I don't think, I didn't hear anyone say we wanna be the 10 out of 10 and, and set the bar for tree preservation and stuffy, I didn't hear that. I think I, I heard that we wanna be, we wanna, uh, require a higher standard of development, but I didn't hear 10 out of 10. And I, and I think that approach of using, using these tools and providing flexibility, you know, if it gets us to the same place, probably a good approach. Does everyone agree with that?
I do.
I do. I would say out of all of the options that you just gave me, my initial reaction is to go with the increased landscaping. It is, seems like the cheapest way to go out of, out of the other options. It's something that we sort of already have in place. And if a homeowner wants to go in and clear cut a lot and take off a small home and put a bigger home on its place, with the increased landscaping, we could, um, assure that in another 20 or 30 years, it looks exactly like it did before the big home went on there. If that makes, I mean, my goal is to keep the air green and clean and I don't necessarily have to be able to have a tree so big that we can hang, swing from it. Does that make sense? Just need to make sure that there's a tree there and it's healthy and it's gonna grow. But, but yeah, my initial reaction is the increased landscaping. If we can do some of the other things, great, but flexibility is.
If you do some of the other, maybe you, you get credit for preserving. If you preserve more that, that are existing, you don't have to put as much increased landscaping in. That type of a, I think that's your, what you're alluding to, Mr. Tagle.
Yeah, I, I just wanna have the options available to us.
Right.
You know, because if there's some reason that one option worked a little bit better in this case than the other, I wanna be able to go that way. But I, going back to Karen's question a few minutes ago, where do, where are we starting? I mean, what does the city have right now? The areas that we should be looking at to see what are the potential, uh, issues here or where, where developers could come in? I mean, is there a lot of heavily wooded areas like the site we saw two weeks ago left? Um, you know, again, it's just to, to get, to get our arms around what's left here in Troy. Cause I think that's gonna start to guide, you know, it, it's gonna start to identify what kind of issues could come up and what of these three remedies we could use to, uh, to ease the, the clear cutting stuff that we've been seeing.
I, I just wanna piggyback on what John said. I think a good starting point would be, would we be able to just look at a GIS map and see, okay, what's really left? At least a starting point to see what's left in terms of the larger parcels, something, you know, five acres or larger, similar to, similar to Pinery, that location, and the one on Hunter's Ridge, Hunter's Park, that one on John R.
Yeah.
That might be a good starting point. And then we can hone in on the, on, on the individual locations. Maybe that might be something like, you know, this single-family redevelopment, like the one in area like on Charmwood. But maybe a good starting point would be just what's still, what's left out there that we can, that would, would be included, let's say, in probably 75, 80% of future development, larger scale development.
There are, there are some, uh, properties that I know are on the market because people come to the counter and they talk about them. There's not many. But, and it's, it's difficult to predict, you know, the, 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 the assembly that's going on, because if you remember the Pinery Woods, that was, uh, was that four backyards?
It was five.
Four backyards.
Five backyards.
And if you're, five backyards. If you remember, this, the road terminated to the north and the, and the person who owned that deep piece, which was heavily wooded, said, I am not develop, selling my property for redevelopment.
Yeah.
So now, things change and, and property changes hands and it change, goes from family member to the family member and, and maybe the next generation will have a different, so who knows? But my point is, it's not, it's not predictable. I mean, if, you know, if it was me, you know, on the right day, if I owned that property, I'd probably, you know, be willing to sell for the, or someone else for the, for the month, you know, and so it's, it's, it's difficult to predict. So if, maybe as an exercise, we could look at types, you know, we could, we could look at what, that we knows on, are on the market. Because again, the individual, the standalone five acre vacant sites that are ready and ripe for, for redevelopment, they don't exist. At least not the ones that, that are not full of challenges like floodplains and wetlands or, or what have you. There's just not a lot. But there are a lot of deep, relatively, the, the vacant lot, there are more deep backyards. And there's some areas where there are some, they were platted or they were, they were, they were meeded, meeded off, you know, relatively large.
Those are probably the best.
Yeah, I, is there a way to find out how, what is the condition of those trees? If you do get a map of, um, what's out there? Because I know that the Pinery, um, developer said that the trees weren't in good shape. So are we worrying about?
Well, I, I think.
It takes a, takes a forest or.
It would be basically like creating a woodland map. Is what you, it, it would've been a lot light. It, it would be difficult to, to tell the species of trees are actually going out there and doing some surveying.
You can't do that until development occurs.
Right.
You can't force anyone to.
Yeah.
To reveal that until they're requesting a development.
Um, in fact, yeah, yeah.
And what I've seen of some of these sites, most recently, there's a huge percentage of those trees that should go anyway, period. They're not in, not in a good condition. They're leaning, you know, they're actually inhibiting, you know, uh, growth, uh, of the other trees. So, I, I think, you know, we, we've heard the developers say, you know, some are not worth saving. That's maybe on one edge of the opinions, but there's also the other side too. Yes, Karen?
Um, when Mr. Tagle talked about incorporating maybe all of these goals and intents into something that we come up with, I immediately thought of my subdivision and I invite all of you to come in and take a drive through my subdivision. It's the Westwood Park, just adjacent here to, um, the city property. And it's a big circle and it has 54 homes in it. And the developer at the time did a great job of all three things. Meaning, when he put the homes on the different parcels of land, he kept some of the original trees. And then as homes were developed, we did increased landscaping. And then in the center of our subdivision, there is a park and it is all original trees that were there. So if you drive through my subdivision, I think the oldest home is probably 16, 17 years old. But the trees there are fully mature at, you know, 25, what you would think of it as for a 25 or 30 year old subdivision. And so when you can incorporate all of these things, it, it's beautiful. I mean, it's, you get these new big homes surrounded by huge lush trees and, and it's the ideal.
So did the developer take out the ash trees?
We don't have ash trees. No, I think that they probably just, I, I, you know, I don't know. I, I don't think we have ash trees, but we have not removed dead wood out of, a bunch of dead wood or dead trees out of our, out of our park. And we put a path in it. And I'm just saying that when you can incorporate these three things, it's a love. And then, I'm just saying that when you can incorporate these three things, it's lovely. Because in a lot of the new subdivisions, they put branches in the front yards, you know, little tiny skinny things.
We call those twigs.
Twigs, well, branches, twigs, whatever. But I like, I'm liking your idea, and I just, I immediately thought of my, my subdivision. It turns out well, when you can do that.
Yes, Mark?
I, I kinda wanna point something out. The largest parcel that I know of that's undeveloped and wooded, but it throws you a curveball because it's not a zone residential, is the northwest corner of Long Lake and Crooks.
Yep. A lot of which is where it's depressed, and there's a stream going through it.
Oh, yeah.
But, I mean, you know, when you talk about your subdivision, I, uh, developed a subdivision as well, and I preserved the trees, as you recall. But I had a hell of a time preserving all the trees and all the underbrush.
Right, right.
So, it was totally natural. But I had to put a snow fence around and protect it, because otherwise the contractors would actually encroach. But there is some value in preserving also the underbrush, is what I'm, my whole point. It's not, not just necessarily the tree itself. Because the rabbits like to run around.
You need your critters.
Yes, Tom.
John, isn't your office building in, is it timbered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Could you elaborate on that? That's a, that's a commercial as opposed to residential. You know, that's a gorgeous area. Just, it's all wooded, it's very, I don't think there's any grass there. If there is, it's tiny.
No, the developers just, they did a good job of, of placing the buildings, keeping the, the landscape, and that, you know, the parking certainly is screened from diff, the zones of parking in different areas. Um, yeah, I, I mean, it's, uh, you wish you'd seen more of that, as opposed to cutting everything down and putting the asphalt, you'll see the asphalt in and such. But like we said earlier, I mean, it takes some forethought, it takes some planning, you know, uh...
So, are, those trees that are there that we see today, those are reg, I mean, indigenous, or?
As far as I know, they were the original.
Original trees?
Yeah.
What a beautiful job. So, why can't we create some kind of a ordinance slash whatever to create that kind of thing throughout the city? Because that is, that is a superior project.
Mark, I wanted to ask you, because one of the things you talked about, when we said we don't want to, uh, we only wanna limit it to new developments, you know, we talked about that. And that was kind of the direction that the planning commission was giving to that. What stops a developer from, uh, on these really long, deep parcels, going in, buying up the first parcel, then clearcutting it, and then buying up the next parcel and clearcutting it? Because each of those are single parcels of land, then. And then, coming back to the planning commission after they've assembled them all, and they've all been clearcut. How do we guard against that?
Well, if they're, if, if there's a home on the site, and you have the philosophy that you're not gonna restrict individual homeowners, they prob, they would have the right to clearcut their land. So, what I was telling Mr. Edmonds is, what would stop someone who's assembling a variety of homes? Developer X buys a home, he owns the home, clearcut it, clearcut the other one, clearcut the other one, because they're standalone homes, and then submit his development package.
That, that's true. I, I will say, we have written ordinances before that, that have a, uh, a, a look-back period. Where basically, we'll say, if we can show aerial photographs that you clearcut within three or five years of your submission, whatever we quantify your development is, um, you have to mitigate and replace back on what you took down. So, there, if that's a concern, there are other provisions that we can put in. Now, John, I, John, see you shaking your head. It's gonna, it could be an administrative question, we determine what that, how much they took down. It could be a question about that, but there are, I call it look-back provisions.
No, I was, I'm shaking my head, is, people just, you know, what the, what lengths they'll go to, to, you know, to make that Mr. Mark.
One town should be road in Orange, it goes back three years. So, if you submit a plan, we look back three years at aerial photographs to determine what was taken down, and, and then you mitigate based on that. Um, some I've seen five and ten years, so it, it really is, it, we can have provisions to somewhat prevent that.
In, in most cases of assembly, though, there's, there's, there's offers to purchase that are conditional on getting site plan approval. So, you know, if you lined up four different properties, he's got offers to purchase, but if, if they don't get planning commission approval, the sale, the sale doesn't go through, and the property, they don't sell the property. So, property owners are gonna clearcut their backyard on the off-chance that they might get site plan approval, but then they've clearcut, and they, and then the developer goes away, and they've, their trees are gone. So, there is, for, for, in that, in those instances of assembly, the, the process itself, I think, helps us. Unless I'm missing something, thinking, thinking through here, I think the fact that there's a, an offer versus outright purchase. Because the developer doesn't wanna go purchase and hold the property outright, and then you're stuck with an individual lot that you can't develop. So, that, that's, that's a form of protection, and that we don't, you know, anyways.
So, it's probably not a, a real likely situation. At least you...
In that instance, but, you know, I'm...
It doesn't, but it doesn't prevent the issue that, that Mark raised earlier about that one neighborhood where people are coming in, building new houses, and taking down their trees.
No.
Right.
But then we open a can of worms, do the planning commission wanna start regulating single-family homes, existing single-family homes and tree protection.
Well, that's our next slide, so I don't know if that's... There's only two. So, what I think I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, can we handle this through our existing zoning orders provisions and treat this kind of like buffering, but allow, in addition to buffering, to provide maybe, maybe bonuses for, or credit for preserving, preserving existing trees? Do we start, do we start over, or do we do, we use what we have?
Flexibility. Right.
I vote for using what we have.
What's the, are we just talking semantics here? I mean, so we don't call it a woodland's ordinance, but we put whatever we want to take that would fall under that and put it in our ordinance. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, why can't we do that? We can amend our ordinance.
Let, let's do it this way. I think there's different ways to skin the cat from how we write the ordinance. Let's start with question one, tree preservation protection. Does the planning commission wanna put regulations on there that, that require tree preservation? You have to save trees, you can't develop your property, um, with, through clearcutting. You, there's, there's that threshold.
Within limits, yeah.
Versus, well, let me add that. You're not required to preserve, but you can, and that, you, so we talked about combination of these. You can, if, so, if you, if you wanna cut down every tree on your property, you wanna clearcut and then replant, you can do that. I'm just talking about, if you wanna protect, maybe there's trees that make a lot of logical sense to preserve and protect. You do that, and you do that in an area, but you also augment your required trees by, by buffering elsewhere.
We're still talking about this four to ten inch.
Yeah, whatever, I don't wanna bog down with numbers. I'm just talking in concept, so... I think you should throw the four to ten inch out and just forget about, forget that it ever existed, and let me explain why really quickly. I think that that was from a forester's mentality, that those four to ten inch were likely to survive, more likely to survive. So, if we save groupies of that, those size, it's more likely to survive. I would, I personally think that you'd wanna, an example, PUD number one, what was that called? Woodside. Woodside Bible and, and the condo, we found there was, uh, some huge trees up there. I can't remember what they were, but they're bigger than ten inch. So, that four to ten doesn't, you, it, it, it restricts you in a, in a mindset. I just think you should just forget about that.
Well, then maybe we should be, because if we, if we do that, then let's not lose sight of the, uh, the landmark tree. You know, you know, if we've got a, a twenty-four-inch bur oak someplace, the residents are gonna know about it, and I think you oughta use, do everything possible to protect that tree. Look at Rochester Hills, they just did that. They actually relocated a street based on that.
Well, the other factor would be, if you have a twenty-inch oak, or whatever it may be, maybe you're gonna have to provide at least five ten inches. You have to have an incentive for them to preserve, but you, you know, it's, it's, it's the creativity that you have to try to create. Because you can't possibly preserve, it could be in the center of a development, and the guy's gonna have to actually, uh, tear it down. Okay, that's fine.
Maybe he doesn't have to tear it down. If he uses some creative, that you're always talking about, some creative design concepts, maybe he can design around that. Make that part, make that part of a interior open space.
Yeah, I've got trees that are growing right through my roof on my office building.
Do we wanna require preservation, or do we wanna encourage and incentivize preservation?
Well, that really weakens the...
Well, if you require, if you require, you have the potential to, I just wanna be, we gotta be clear that it will limit development potential. It's, it's, it's very hard to require tree preservation and still maintain full development rights that people currently have.
I vote for encourage and incentivize.
But, are, so you're saying there are no conditions or no cases where you would not wanna require preservation?
I'm not interested, I'm not...
Well, that was your, that was your presentation. It says, "Do you wanna do this or this?" Now, if you don't have some element of required preservation,
Yeah.
the obvious is, we have nothing to preserve, or we will not enforce preservation on anything. And I'm not so sure that's the case, and it kind of gets back to what's left here. I mean, I, I know we can't go out and survey every site or survey every tree. Do we put provisions in there, eh, eh, do we, to try to cover as many, uh, many scenarios as we can? Now, this, the, the preservation scenario may be rather narrow, you know? Uh, so that there may be not a lot of, um, situations, excuse me, Phil, where you would preserve something. But I don't know that I'd wanna not have it in there, just...
Right.
Without knowing, without knowing, I'd want to have and not wanna make a judgment.
But if you have a very narrow standard by which you're going to require preservation, then that's not really different than encouraging it, or, I mean, to encourage, to encourage it or to incentivize it, and then in, in this particular, very narrow instance, it must be preserved. When, I, I guess I just thought when you were talking more about preservation, you just kind of meant across the board. Again, with all trees that are of a certain variety and a certain size, regardless, they must be preserved.
No, there are limits to how creative, creativity and, and the, and how much money someone can make by developing a piece of property have to come together.
Okay.
So, if, if it's a, if it's a situation like you just said, if it's something like, you know what? If, I, I, I don't wanna preserve this, but in lieu of preserving this, I'll do all of this. I think that's, you know, that needs to be in there as well.
Yes. And, and you could also incentivize the preservation of tree, of existing trees. So, that's a, a form of, of preservation is incentivizing it, so you, you, what's in it for the developer? Well, you come up with an incentive so that, so that there's a, there's a benefit to preserving versus mitigation or, or...
I, I think, well, we just don't wanna be heavy-handed. There's gotta be a win for the developer, but also for the city. That's what, what started this whole conversation.
I think that's, I think we're talking the same language here.
Right. Instead of versus, 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 I would say or, or.
And, I would say and.
And/or, whatever.
Yeah, you, you're, you're right. We, that was just for presentation, but yeah, it's and/or, and/or. You're right. Good point.
I think making something required versus strongly recommended would pigeonhole you, where you would have to be so specific to each case versus, um, being strongly recommended. You can be more, uh, more generic, where it would be more inclusive.
One of the three is required. One or a combination of those three is required.
So, conceptually, these three, all these, all these three are a combination of?
They're all in play.
Okay, we can, we can work with that.
Yeah, I think... Don't you wanna have a developer be smart when he preserves? I mean, you have a list of trees that you wanna preserve and protect, and, and there would be incentives. If he does take down a, a twenty-four-inch oak tree, then he would replace it with six four-inch oak trees, or, or six trees.
That, that's my, I guess, I'm trying to explain, that's where I'm kinda getting at, because I think of that as the mitigation. You, 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 we identify the trees, wanna say, there's two ways to deal with it. We identified the oak trees, whatever those trees are that we defined, we wanna say, the, we could write, where the planning commission has the right to require that tree to be protected or preserved, or the planning commission has the right to, or write an ordinance where if you take down those trees, you have to, you have to mitigate at whatever ratio we decide. So, I, I guess my, I'm questioning, trying to get from the planning commission, is, on a threshold standpoint, does the planning commission, we can narrow this as narrow as we want, do you still wanna have some rights to protect, to have the, have the ability to require protection of a tree into the site planning process? Or do you wanna simply write it in there, we have mitigation, we have encouragement, we have bonuses, we have whatever we can think of, that still allows for full development rights, but you have to mitigate as a result, or you have to re-incentivize other plantings as a result?
I think we just, I heard, well, go ahead. I, I heard him say that incentiv, incentivizing is the direction they wanted to go. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I was hearing this, I was hearing different thoughts on some, from different people, but I...
I think you're hearing all three, though. That's the problem.
But, and that's, it's hard, and that's, I mean, it's hard to write an ordinance to fit all three.
Right.
I'm trying to think of how we write an ordinance, and then how we, how we write an ordinance that we can deal with, and then allow, you know, developers understand it, but also the planning commission to actually enforce it.
So, Nova, if it's a thirty-six-inch cherry greater, you cannot cut it down without permission. If you do, if you do get permission to cut it down, you know, thirty-six-inch tree, you've gotta replace it with, it's more than thirty-six inches in total of, of, of inches. So, maybe, maybe it's, I forget what it is, I can look it up, but fifty inches in total of however many trees. So, it's, it's, it's actually strong preservation language versus, versus, you know, versus incentivizing it, where if you keep that tree, you get more credit than if you were to take it down and plant new trees.
Does that specify the certain variety?
It does.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because there's a thirty-six-inch ash tree, and I think there are.
You do, you do it, and Kirk can, Kirk, you know, can, that's more, um, but when you write an ordinance, you basically dictate the, the tree species that was associated size with it. You know, so an oak tree might be, you know, the size requirement on an oak tree would be what's called a landmark heritage tree, would be different than that of a maple tree. And, and then you say, you know, then you, you don't have to protect dead, dying, or diseased trees, based on the review of a, of a certified arborist or a landscape architect, or whatever you want to choose.
How many communities actually have landmark tree ordinances?
Most communities that we work with do. And most communities we work with, um, they do the, they do the mitigation, where you can remove any tree that's a landmark or woodland, but your, your amount of ratio of replacement is based on different factors.
So, there's a penalty for...
There's a penalty for removing, and then we also write it where there's bonuses. So, if you preserve a tree, you get two times the tree replacement you would get if you would've removed it, or there's ways to play with that to incentivize it, but you're not restricting where you can't take down any, suppose any tree that you'd like to.
Yes, Kirk.
Is there a, in Nova, is you have to mitigate on the same property? Because, I mean, we wanna look at a, a sustainable urban forest, and if we're going to say we're gonna replace a thirty-six-inch tree with six six-inch trees, that might not be sustainable on the property. You might just fit the planting. So, um, I would suggest the commission look at possibly expanding that outside to the closest park, the closest median, or, or something to that. Because we still wanna maintain a sustainable forest.
That's a really good idea, because we heard the last developers say to us, you know, there's no way all those trees could be saved, and still get a footprint and for a house. Because it, there was a certain, I think it was R1C or E or something. What is the one that's most restrictive?
The smallest is E.
E, wasn't that an R1E? That was, uh, not this, not Pinary Woods, but the one before, Wood Park Two or something.
Yeah, and let me just give you an example to, to Kirk's point. What we've done in other, I'm reading our notices rewritten, I'm just reading it right now, is that we require one mitigation on site. If you can prove you can't do it on site, then you can do it in a public, if it's accepted by the public entity. You can do it in a public entity. If they don't wanna accept it, then you pay into what we call a tree fund, which is a, which is then can be used for public, the city can use it for public plantings and other places. So, first priority is onsite. If you prove you can't do it onsite, you do it somewhere in a public property. If you can't find a, a symbol of public property site, you pay to the tree fund equivalent, and it can be used that way.
And the city holds that money until such time that we have a project that makes sense, and then we, we, so there is a benefit, a public benefit to, and the trees get, you know, replaced at whatever ratio we come up with.
Well, and the, I, I watched the, the, the last budget hearing, just from last night, and one of the things that was, uh, was a concern, was that the city is now going through, and you're certainly aware of that, Kirk, that we're gonna start this replacement program again in neighborhoods. And I guess you guys have identified like some twelve hundred places where, um, trees have not been replaced. And, uh, the budget, initial budget called for, uh, a hundred and twenty-three of those twelve hundred per year. And my, my point of view, from a personal standpoint, that's woefully inadequate. You know, we're gonna have to wait ten years before we even get those replaced, and I don't know what the outcome was. Maybe you can...
There wasn't, there wasn't a consensus, but I have a feeling that, um, we'll be... There wasn't, there wasn't a consensus, but I have a feeling that, um, we'll be changing that to a five-year program in the proposed budget, so.
Thank you. That'd be great. I appreciate it.
Just to clarify, those are for street, street trees in the.
Correct.
But, but by the same token, though, Mark, if we actually have, if there's a site where they can't replace the, the trees on the site, and they contribute into a fund, then that could, you know, increase the, uh, that type of thing, uh, that you're trying to do with the replacement trees. They wouldn't all have to be used in a park. So, and I agree, you know, I think we've got to have flexibility, yes.
I just had a thought on the mitigation aspect of it, kind of jumping ahead a little bit more in the specifics of it, more hypothetical, just a thought that came to mind. Would the mitigation be implemented within the right-of-way? Or is that, would, would it be only within the right-of-way of that, of a certain development, or would it be on, on a private parcels that will eventually be private property? Because I'm thinking of a hypothetical where, you know, let's say there is a mitigation agreement in terms of replacement, and those trees end up being in the backyards or side yards of, of those parcels, and five years down the road, that, the new property owner just cuts them down. And so there's, that, there's no longer the trees that were part of that mitigation, and so they're, they're gone.
Yep.
We, we actually, the planning department and code enforcement take a very heavy-handed approach to tree removal, when we have site plans that include landscape plans that show trees. So moving forward, you know, then we're gonna, we're gonna deal with these like we do commercial buffers, and if you provide, submit a landscape plan for a commercial development, and it shows six trees along that northern property line, and one of those trees dies, you got to plant another tree to make it six trees, because now you're only at five. And when that tree, in twenty years matures or gets diseased or whatever, and we, we're heavy-handed with, with, with our enforcement of landscape plans.
And I agree with you. I, I think there's even been instances, or a few, very few examples of where you've actually gone in and had them stop work, when they said, when you're made aware of it, however, you have to be made aware of it first. If the residents don't tell you.
True.
We don't have enough code enforcement people out there to, uh.
So just to piggyback on that, when we look at a, a commercial site, I'm trying to think of an example, but, like, it doesn't matter. We do a site compliance inspection when it's constructed, and we, so we count parking spaces, and we, we make, you know, look at the site. We will look at landscape trees. And if there's, we count, and there's, and you know, there's, of the twenty trees, two of them are diseased or dying, or they look like they're in bad shape. Before we grant them a CFO or approve that, approve that inspection so they can get their CFO, they've got to replant those trees.
What happens later on, Brett?
If.
Trees take two to three years growing, you know. It's almost impossible to legislate every possible condition.
I mean, we just have to go ahead and do something and start and modify as we go along, but, I mean, if this happens or if that happens, it's, it's impossible.
I agree.
Someone can get around it, believe me.
We don't have tree police that go around looking.
Right.
But, you know, people, people have eyes on properties, and people keep their eye on their neighbors, and, you know, we, we do our best to ensure that.
Yeah, I, one thing I've been concerned about is the, the cluster zoning, varying the cluster zoning to encourage tree preservation. And, and I know there, there was discussion at the last, uh, forum meeting where they said it was impossible to change the, the law configuration because of all the requirements for the cluster zoning, to minimize. Have we looked at that, or we talked about that? Is that something that's coming up?
Great, yeah. This goes hand in hand with that.
I know we paid you to do that.
Um, yes, that's something that we are going to look at too, as part of this, but we wanted to get, start working on this.
Will that be a part of this woodland protection or not?
I think that should be part of it.
It would, it would go, well.
It's go hand in hand.
It would, it would go, okay, well, we recognize that it's important to amend, to update, revise our cluster provisions to allow for that, that effort again, flexibility. So.
That's not going to be opposed by the developers. They will probably welcome that.
Right. And it's more incentive for getting creative, and, and so we can, we'll, we'll initiate that. We've talked about that.
Would that promote smaller homes, do you think, or, because I think there seems like.
Did you, did you send up an email and tell them what to say? We, so, great point, so.
The footprint is, people like, the families are getting older. They like single, you know, one-story homes, and I think the footprints of the homes are getting bigger.
Oh, that's not true.
I mean, rather than two-story.
Those big two-story homes are still selling.
It could be.
They are. Not the ranches. Like, that's why a lot of the developers don't even offer ranches.
It's, it's a, it's a great point. It's something that does go hand in hand with this. Um, we're, we want to try to make sure we can get stuff through, so we're not trying to buy up too many, and we can shoot at this point. If we can get to that, we'll get to it as soon as possible.
I think there's tree organs, the tree requirements, and the footprint of the homes have to go hand in hand. I think we want to encourage the best design, yet encourage them to preserve trees.
Yep.
And it, and it just doesn't make sense, if the, if the, the footprint of the home requires that you take a tree down, it doesn't make sense for us to require them to preserve those trees. And they actually go hand in hand.
So whatever we come up with, come, Mark.
So, there's a question I have. I kind of tried to prompt it before to get an answer. Would this apply to that large wooded piece of property that's not residentially owned?
That's my next slide.
Oh, okay. I thought we were done.
I heard you, but I, we're gonna get to it.
We're gonna get to it, Mark.
All right, can I, I have to give one input on that.
Good question, Bill.
Can I piggyback just one thing? So this is, this will be tools in a toolbox for getting, and the cluster provisions are a critical tool. And that needs, they need to be updated. We, we agree with you.
Okay, Ben and Brett don't want me to say this, but we also have to deal with the landscape, tree preservation and landscape plan standards, and do amendments to the zoning ordinance where it refers to that, and also do updates to the tree, there's a tree, separate tree ordinance as part of this overall process.
Which one was included in our packet there? Is that the tree preservation?
Tree preservation and landscape design standards.
Okay.
Standards.
Yeah.
So are you saying we have to do more than that?
Eliminate the standards, eliminate the citations of the standards in the zoning ordinance, and update the zoning ordinance to an updated tree ordinance, which we have, which deals with trees and the public rights ways that Kurt deals with.
And product property.
Yeah.
Well, I read through the, the, you know, even the existing tree preservation, and I thought I saw a lot of stuff that's not really occurring. Do we still, does that go, still go to the parks and recreation?
No.
Who does it go to?
It goes to me and him.
Is there a forester in the parks and rags?
Yeah, there's still one forester. There's not a landscape analyst anymore, but there's still one forester in the city.
And Ron Hind was the landscape analyst?
Correct.
Well, you know, I think, getting back to each site, you know, I like, to me, I think you want smart development. If you have a site that has a lot of pristine landmark trees, they, they should be given options to preserve those trees or replace them if necessary. If it's, if they're all box elders, they're all ash trees, that, it would make sense for them to take them down. To me, you know, I think it, it depends on the site, and that's sort of the, I think the rationale to review the site, is to base, base it on the tree survey, see what's after there.
Case-by-case basis.
Yeah, absolutely. I know it's hard to regulate or to, to write an ordinance to do that, but that really is what they were looking for, is a smart zoning requirement for a developer to go in and take advantage of the site that he has to, to use it the best he can.
Does everyone agree with what he just said?
Yes, it should be a smart decision. We don't want dumb ones.
I just think we need to be a little bit careful, I think we need to be a little bit careful on what we call this. If we're doing as Mark, uh, is suggesting that we do away with all the, the four to ten inch.
Yeah, I don't think a four to ten inch applies.
I think, uh, I'm, it's going to be called wood, woodland protection rather than woodland preservation.
At this point, I think it's gonna.
Semantics.
It's semantics. I think it's going to be bundled into the existing zoning ordinance.
I just don't want the residents to think that we're wandering down even the existing. Yes, Tom.
Yeah. Are we just going to be talking about residential now?
Well, let's, let me go to the next slide. So I'm agreeing with what Phil said, and, and I think you did a really good job of summarizing what we've talked about.
At this point, I agree, but I deserve the right to amend it, not based on what this next slide is.
Well, the next slide is simple, real simple but real complicated. What does this apply to? Does it, any new development, new residential development only, so basically like a site condo or subdivision application, or could, well, we need to address that. What about the existing large lot, single-family develop, existing large lot that I, that we showed you earlier, where it's one, it's an existing lot, there's a home on it, it's demolished, new home, and you cut the trees down? That's the question. So as I indicated, there's, Mark, Mark asked a question about the, the Kelly property at the corner of Long Lake and Crooks, Northwest Corner. It's, I looked it up, it's twenty-four point six acres. Heavily wooded.
Is Kelly, Kelly owns it?
Yeah.
Your family.
No. It's a little bit, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to this slide. So it's twenty-four point six acres, so they're required to, to have almost five acres open space in that twenty-four point six acres. They're required greenbelt trees. I, it's, I did the distance, it's eight hundred and some feet, thirteen hundred and some feet. Uh, there's parking lot trees, so assuming they do two hundred parking, two hundred parking spaces, you're looking at already about a hundred and thirty trees just before we even look at buffering, and so it's, it's not a clear cut, this is not an instance of clear cutting, and, and not replace, not replacing some trees. You have to have open space, you've got to have greenbelt trees, you've got to have all these things, so. It, and it's also not next to single-family residential, but it's a twenty-four point six acre site that's heavily wooded. Perception, right? We're gonna, I can tell you what's going to happen if things come before planning commission, and they get approval, and the trees start coming down, my phone's going to start ringing. That's, that's what's going to happen. But we do have protection in terms of open space and trees that we talked about here. So it's a little bit different from, from, um, single-family residential, but Mark's phone and my phone will ring when the trees start coming down.
But Brett, couldn't you clear cut and then leave open space after the fact?
You could, you could, you could. But you, my point was, it's not going to be bereft of trees, because there's, there's three thou, whatever, my math, almost three thousand feet of, it's front and, it's got three fronts. So you need, it's at, it's at, um, Crooks and Crook's.
Between Corporate Drive and.
Yeah, it's the Stoneville from John's Oaks, correct?
So it's fronts on three roads, so you need, you need a tree by your ordinance every thirty feet along those three. So right there, there's a lot of trees. And if, for every eight parking spaces, you need a tree. And so my, my point is, you could clear cut it and replace, but it's not going to be bereft of trees. There will be trees on the site. There's just not a requirement that you preserve trees.
But smaller trees.
I don't know what's out there now in terms of, but yes, probably they're not going to be planted at the same sizes. What's there?
General.
Yes.
The, some people like to buy a home with just grass. Some people love wooded, like your development is excellent of, you know, preserving all the trees. Just put a, you know, cut a little circle and put the house in the middle of the forest, and I've seen both. Do we now have a, anything in our ordinance or requirements for residential development that does say twenty percent have to be wooded or, okay. So we don't have it. So again, but, you know, then you're dealing with people's likes and dislikes. You're, do, does Troy want to be a wooded community? Or does it want to be, you know, empty lot?
Let me, let me piggyback on that. How many trees do you have in your backyard right now?
I think the last count, well, front and back is about twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven trees. Okay, if you're gonna cut any, you want to cut any of your trees down, you got to seek a permit from, from the city to cut any trees down. Or to cut a certain percentage, or to clear cut. Do you want that? I mean, that's.
Probably not.
I think if you redevelop a lot.
That's what killed the last.
No, but I mean, if you redevelop a lot, that's different. Get on an existing home. If you're going to tear a house down. Pardon me?
His lot, his current lot is developable.
Yeah, it probably will be.
Yes, it will be.
Come or repeat, you can legislate every possible.
Yeah, I know.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to, because I'm just exact to that point. You know, we can't legislate to tell people, um, whatever percentage on their lot, because like I say, some people like a lot of grass, and some people like it totally wooded. So we can't, how do you, we can't legislate a twenty percent or a thirty percent wooded, or, you know, unless you want to become known as, you know, that type of.
But to answer your question, how many trees, how, how many, what's the spacing on street trees?
Fifty feet from any other right-of-way tree, thirty feet from any private tree.
So you're talking a standard less than one or two street trees at minimum?
One to two.
One to two.
And you're going to be piggybacking on that. Let me ask Mr. Motzey. If we create this ordinance that only applies to new developments, is that going to be subject to litigation?
Well, you could get an equal protection argument, but as long as it's not affecting a fundamental right, you just have to have a reasonable basis for buying only a new development.
So we're, we're probably okay.
If it's kind of spacing on a beach road.
We think.
No, I think we would probably tie it to the site.
Sure.
That's what makes.
It's new development that qualifies, that qualifies in our cycle, in the site under the process.
It would tie to protection of neighborhood character and property values and.
I always want to have to regulate somebody cutting a tree down in their lap, then you, I mean, that's.
What, what about to, um, just to Mark's point, um, we're talking more right now about site condominiums projects. Do we want it to apply to commercial developments and office or whatever, or is it simply an issue of single-family site condominium projects?
I think that's more appropriate than the residential developments, but I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels.
It applies to area.
I would like to see it apply to commercial.
Everything, it applies to everything.
Yeah, good.
Even when you, when you say everything, you don't mean residential?
No, I'm saying residential, commercial, every, every category.
Well, we're going to get into a can of worms with that.
But not industrial.
Why not?
Okay, fine. Maybe?
I, I want to be, oh, I want to be careful. When we say residential, I think, I'm not hearing single lot, you know, you tear down your house, you rebuild your own house, you, that. We're talking about site condominiums have to come before the planning commission.
Development proposals.
Development proposals that, that have to come through the planning commission.
Not lot splits.
Not lot splits, not.
Okay, split some convuls.
Would there be any scenarios where there would be exemptions, like for example, a church, a mosque, a temple, um, a private school, or a nonprofit organization wanting to develop something? Would, would that apply in any way? Or we're looking at something that is all-inclusive, no exemptions whatsoever?
I want to go back to the slide.
I like the legal question, whether you could exempt somebody and apply the law unevenly.
But why would I want to exempt them?
I'm just saying, it might be a legal issue, that's what I want to answer.
Yeah, I agree with you. You just have to justify why you're treating them differently. And if you're treating them differently because of religious reasons, that can get into some trouble there, so.
Nah, I say that, nah, they're, they're in for it too.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody. I'd say to Tom, it's a good idea, everybody.
Everybody with schools.
Really?
Public schools, we have no. If you can't regulate.
We can, okay, yes.
Yeah, we don't have any control over them. You're right.
So just, so we're on the same page here. We already have protection for, I'll say, commercial developments. Twenty percent open space, the greenbelt trees, the parking lot trees, the landscape buffer. So if you're a, an office next to residential, there's a requirement in the ordinance that actually requires you to create that buffer. So there's already language there now. Am I hearing we want more than this?
But couldn't your, couldn't the woodlands be your buffer in some sense, in a certain sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you've got two commercial developments.
Well, we talked about similar to the Faith Luthgren thing, where they put the buffer all the way along.
That, that's an example.
So would that be, uh, that'd be, they could include that in their twenty percent open space.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Flexibility, have we, is we.
I mean, I, I wouldn't just limit it between two, like residential and commercial. I, you know, I mean, if, and there's nothing to say that we couldn't have it between buffers between commercial, uh, properties. I mean, the whole idea is to, you know, try to get a little bit more green space, you know, in this community, and nix the, the sea of asphalt for a lot of reasons.
Right. So if it's a burger, burger restaurant with a drive-thru next to a burger restaurant with a drive-thru, we want that, we want a buffer between the two.
Yes.
What about commercial? Never worry about industrial. The industrial.
I don't think that's what you're saying.
That's why I'm trying to clarify.
No, I think.
Again, I would say all.
I never mix things up here.
All.
So what do you, I don't understand what all these.
I think you guys are talking about two different things. You're talking about landscape buffer, and they're talking about preserving woodlands. So you guys are talking about two different things.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Preserving or incentivizing the preservation of? Okay.
Regardless of what the zoning is.
I think there's already.
It applies to anything that's come through site under.
So get back to your question. If you've got two burger joints next to each other, you have to consider the scale of development as well. So I mean, you're not going to have a fifty-foot buffer, but you could have appropriately scaled buffer that would soften that, you know, again, that.
But you could have appropriately scaled buffer that would soften that, you know, again, that extension of hardscape. Don't we have that now?
Down the way, commercial, commercial, do we?
No, no, a buffer between.
We have a buffer like park, my parking lot, we have to be a parking buffer.
We've got perimeter parking required, we got interior landscape.
Greenbelt.
Yeah, we kinda got that.
We kinda got it already, is what I'm saying. Like, I hear what you're saying. So, same page, so I hear.
I think what they're saying, though, if you have a burger joint that they're proposing to put in the middle of a woodland, you think wanna have the ability to regulate those woodlands independent of those standards up there.
I got it.
Yes.
We were talking the same thing, but totally different.
Well, clearly, we need to hit a keg, so we can all be on the same page, right?
Oops. Okay. Clear as mud?
When will the draft be done? What time is it now?
Eight-thirty.
I think this one's answered.
So it would not apply to the third bullet?
Would not, is what I heard.
Yes.
Now, just so that everyone knows, you could have a case where someone has a two-acre lot and they do what's called a lot split in the assessing department. And then they don't have to come to the planning commission, they go directly to building permits. That's one nuance that if it was wooded, it wouldn't be caught because it's not a development proposal per se. What's, yeah, you can only create what, five, you can only create.
So lot splits are not new developments?
You, technically, because it's not coming to the planning commission. You can create only four, four, four parcels out of a parent parcel.
Four parcels, if the parcel's less than ten acres in size, you can, under the subdivision control act, which is now called land division, you can, you can split it into four. Without going through the site condominium or subdivision process. If you do more than that, unless, ten acres or less, you have to go before the planning commission.
What's the scope of that? What, what is, you know, the big picture? How many of those type of things do we have?
Very few.
What happens?
Very few. That's the reason why we have site development, or condos, site condos, for that reason, to bypass that.
Ask Gary about the theory on me, he does, well, maybe not all splits, maybe he just buys and tears down.
Yeah, there may be small projects like that.
But like Tom, probably, you could do a lot split on your lot and get two homes on it, probably. They're probably oversized.
No, for particular, no, other lots in our subdivision has happened, yes.
Yeah. Or they do a lot split.
Yes, that's happened, um.
There was one in your neighborhood that was a combination, I think they did four on McClure.
That was, yeah, that was, that's a sore point, but I.
That's gonna be a favor, let's not go into details on that, please.
But there's been corner lots where the house was facing, could've faced either street.
Right.
And so because it faced one direction, they said, well, we'll split the lot and have the other property face the other street. That's happened at many corners in our subdivision.
So then, if the, where, the route you're going, that would not be, the woodland's protection wouldn't be applied to it because it's technically not a development proposal coming for approval at the planning commission. Just clarifying.
I, I think that if you implemented that, that the possibility exists that it would become too prohibitive for the existing homeowner people, and that's not our intent.
It would be controversial. We wanna avoid the controversy that occurred the last time.
I just wanna save your guys calling our office a year from now, so how come they didn't save the trees on that?
It, it also gets complicated on the land division act because you technically would meet the requirements of zoning orders, but you, for the split, but you wouldn't for the landscaping. It complicates things because the assessor grant is grants, anyways.
Yeah, I just.
I'm happy not to go down that road.
The rare event that, in which that will occur, I'm not sure it's worth opening the can of worms. We can't regulate everything.
We have to ask.
We'll try, but we can't.
I think our next step is to come back with some draft ordinance language and we can start beating that around.
Here we go.
No more slides, Brent.
That's it?
Sure.
Timeline for what Ben just said?
Next week.
Well, I wanna add, because you talk, we're talking about background information, we've got like, one of the best GIS persons around, and I think he might be able to develop some, some mapping to show at least groupings of woodlands. I think, I think Alex can probably do that.
I think the city council's gonna ask for that if we don't.
That'd be helpful, thanks, man.
Yep. That would really be helpful, so.
You may wanna exclude the wetlands, or delineate the wetlands with there, if you could.
Yeah, yeah, our wetlands information hasn't been updated in some time. I mean, we'll, we'll, we will use GIS to the best of our advantage to inform everybody of what we're dealing with here. Alex likes these projects. He's got a planning background, and he's very creative.
He gets tired of mapping manhole covers.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing.
Well, Phil, you were talking to me once when we had a conversation about the city of Detroit.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and this is on the next, next subject that we're gonna talk about in the future, but talk about the, the tree, trees that take three thousand gallons a day of water.
Exactly. They, in lieu of stormwater management or green infrastructure, they, they're proposing planting trees because a tree can absorb about three thousand gallons a day of water. So in order to reduce the flow of overland flow to a sanitary drain or sewer, uh, they propose, you know, planting more green infrastructure and more trees. And, and that's, um.
That thought was interesting.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what Detroit's doing now. That's, I don't know if it's gonna work or not, it's gonna be, because you have to measure it in order to see if it works.
They just implemented that?
That's part of their permit now to, in lieu of CSO controls, to install green infrastructure. And that's, that's sort of what I was thinking, is if we can encourage people to plant trees in these buffers, in, in, in addition to, you know, bioswells and rain gardens and those types of things. Forest pavement, that would promote green infrastructure and, and infiltration and, and absorption of the flow of water. That sort of was my incentive to encourage.
Something to think about for the next round after this.
What about woodlands?
Go ahead.
What about woodlands?
That's the next step after this. We're pushing it down the road a little bit.
Because. The city council, the city council thought they could get this back in a month.
This is a priority item.
I know it's a priority, yeah, but I, I, uh.
We've also got other items that are priorities on the planning commission as well.
I think, I think the city council will be, will be able to understand if this took as long as two or three months to get something before, before we have a hearing.
You think, um, the sustainable ordinance committee or whatever group that you call it for the sustainable ordinance review may, they wanna review the tree, uh, tree plan before it comes to the planning commission? Or, you know, some step in that, uh, process?
What would be their purpose?
To analyze the trees, to see.
Wouldn't you need a certain level of expertise to do that?
Well, we have qualified people. But anyway, once you've had the, no, the, when, once you've identified the trees on the site, I think it'd be pretty obvious. Or, you know, with help from the, uh, from the, uh, forester, you know, what trees should be preserved and protected and.
I, I would not vote in favor of that because I think, we don't wanna delay this process any longer, that type of thing.
Well, is the Sustainable Development Review Committee you're talking about?
Yes.
That's, uh, Mr. Strad, Mr. Hudson, myself.
Yeah, the engineer.
Uh, an engineer and, um, and the building official. So, yeah, they can review it. We've also got Kirk Bowensy, who has a background, he's a horticultur, horticulture background, correct? He's, knows a lot about trees. Mark Miller's involved, he's, he knows a lot about tree preservation language and writing ordinances and whatnot, myself and Ben.
It's like a pre-development.
There's a lot of expertise there that, that, that will have input on this.
Phil, you would've been impressed with the last presentation we had. Very good presentation. You had also, how do I say it, the first one.
Be not so, not so impressive.
Not so impressive. I mean, it was horrible. Uh, you know, the labeling of, uh, bioswells and rain gardens and not knowing anything as to where they're going. And they were going to actually have the roof drains go into a bucket, but they didn't know where that bucket was gonna go. I mean, it was just horrible. But the last one was excellent. Very, very good. They knew what they were doing right.
Tom's talking about, uh, it was the Discount Tire on fourteen mile road, fourteen in Minnesota.
Right.
Um, they wanted to add more parking in front of the building and to offset the additional pervious, impervious material in front of the building, they added a large, a larger bioswell feature in front. Very well designed. The engineer who designed it was very thoughtful, knew a lot about, about techniques, he, he was able to answer all questions. Uh, very, very, we had a really good dialogue, it was a great meeting, a great project.
Plant material and everything. The plant material was important, that they understood. I mean, it was just a, a terrific presentation. That's what I've seen.
It's encouraging.
That's what we need more of. Yes, Mark, you ahead?
I, I just would like the planning commission to think about what level of public outreach with this ordinance you would like to see. And don't answer that now. I, I didn't mean, I want you to think.
We're required to have a public hearing, aren't we?
People won't know about it if you just do a public hearing.
Well, I think we've got to, um.
I want you to think about it. I, that's all.
But aren't you, aren't you already implementing, uh, new developments that you're going, uh, that are in the site plan? I thought I heard that on one of the meetings.
Well, no, that's for development approval. What I'm saying is, do you, do you think that this, we should have, maybe have some sort of focus groups, maybe with some residents or developers, or just think about it.
I think that's a good idea. So not all are gonna be happy, but at least we'll get some good input, probably.
Sometimes when ordinance, you, you get buy-in and public input, it gets easier to approve.
Okay, anything else? Next, item six was a public comment for items that are on the current agenda, seeing no one here. We're ready for planning commission comment, and, uh, let's start with Mr. Sensi here tonight.
Well, it's interesting, I, uh, had a meeting today, in a meeting today with a planning commissioner from Birmingham. And I understand that the Whole Foods Market is proposing to move down the road, down Maple toward Eden Street. And, um, just, it's just an interesting point. I think they're looking, probably looking for a bigger site. I think that is a small venue for them, and, um, so it's interesting how Maple is developing, and then they may help encourage other developments along our Maple Road, uh, site.
Is that on the south side of Maple?
East of the bridge, east of the bridge.
East of the bridge.
I think it's by the, by our, the health, the fitness center.
Or where they're going to.
Or where they're going to, yeah.
Is that a larger site than?
That's what he said. You may, you may wanna check with the Birmingham Planning Department.
That's a tricky site.
It is, but it may have more depth.
Isn't it odd shaped? Because I mean, it's gonna be triangular.
Hey, I was curious, um, we met a few months ago about the, uh, the trail.
Yes.
Is there anything more that came with that?
We, actually, were your ears ringing today? Because we brought up your name today. We had our first, um, public meeting with the Trails and Pathways, and we invited internal staff, and we had, uh, a couple residents on the committee as well. It was really a kickoff to the program, to kind of bring everyone up to speed, where we were at, what the proposal is, what are, what was some of the things going on in the background discussions with yourself? In regards to the Water Resource Commission and Troy School District and so forth. Um, so we've got some, we've got a couple of hurdles, um, to get through, to, depending on what, um, aspect of grants we go through. Because of the ASHO standards, so we're working through those, and, um, we're hopeful to, to have some sort of trail and pathway, at least on a, a class three, which is the shared use, this summer. And then look for that class one, where we all think of a trail and pathway as a ten-foot paved pathway through the woods next summer.
Why don't you add, the budget's gonna include one.
Yeah, 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 and we're proposing a half a million dollars of city funds to match a half a million dollars of, of prospective grant funding. So a million dollars a year, uh, it's a three million dollar project, so we could have an eleven-mile trail through the city within three years.
That's great.
Courage to do.
It's one thing to, no questions?
Is pot?
Cracking, anything else?
Well, our city attorney was working real hard on that, Ben told her to stop. No, she, she was gonna try to get something together with this meeting, actually, and, and when Ben mentioned that we're gonna discuss the tree ordinance.
Oh, darn.
She's welcome to come anytime, any meeting, and we'll make room for her, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I'll say.
I'm curious, Brent, where the, um, on the priority list for council, where, you know, more discussion about town center and civic center drive development might fall?
In and out, Mark?
Well, no, I, you know, we, we just have to, to move on it. You know, we're, we're having some discussions internally, and we're have, have investigations on what restrictions we have to sell the properties. Because, um, they're encumbered by some, and we're trying to do the research and what we have to do to be able to sell.
Are we talking about further on, um, Civic Center Drive or?
Town center.
Town center, yeah.
Where this old Troy High School parking lot is, and I, I'm, I'm a proponent for this because we need to do something with that lot. Um, it's in pretty bad shape. So, um, I think it's a, it's a great, great potential.
The first hurdle, that, that area is not gonna be used for the sports bubble, most likely. That, that will be used at the baseball field, sort of between the community center and, and city hall. Behind the Marriott. So we are, yeah, there, we're, we're working with, I forget the names, Little Sports, Little Sports and Troy Soccer, to have, um, an all-sports bubble on our site.
An all-sports bubble?
Probably mostly used for soccer. A sports bubble.
Then it would be behind the, the Marriott parking?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, this is the first I've ever heard of that.
It's the first I've heard of it too, and when I think in terms of what the development should look like surrounding the Civic Center area, it's not some big silver bubble. It's, uh, uh, really, a, a big silver, like the tennis bubble? It would look like another tennis bubble?
The original proposal was a similar bubble to the, the tennis bubble. He's, he's actually provided some new sketches that suggest the hard walls with like a dome-type roof. That would be a little bit more fitting, but like Mark said, that site is, along town center is, is really off the table. Um, we're concentrating on putting that back, Marriott, um, parking deck, um, you've got the Liberty Center parking deck back there, which would be the, the southwest corner of the community center parking lot. So putting it back there, it's, we, it's aesthetically not really what we're looking for is the image along town center. So putting that back with the parking decks, it's a demand we see from, from an indoor sports facility through the winter months, whether it be soccer or, or practice football or whatever. Um, it's, it's a, yeah, golf, it's any, anything. Um, it's a demand that we saw, and, and we were approached by Total Sports, and it's, we're at the infancy stage.
So to be clear, it's seasonal. It's not full, twenty, it's not twelve months a year, it would be seasonal.
No, they keep it open. They just keep it open. Because like, they find football teams like to use them when there's thunderstorms, to hold practice, even if it's August.
So would this front on Liberty over there?
No, it wouldn't front on any road, it would be where there's an existing baseball field, and is there still a cricket pitch there?
There is, but it would even be pushed further south, the, we'd only need about fifty feet of the baseball field, which we would just move that a little bit to the north. So it's really just open space, again, between the baseball diamond and the Marriott parking deck.
Would this be subject to the ordinances that we've been discussing tonight, where we would want buffers in between the different, like, buildings and the, the dome?
Guess it would require a site plan approval.
Would we lose the cricket pitch?
No.
I, I, I don't, I, I'm completely blown away by the idea of a big, huge bubble.
You're not even gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in an underu-, on an underutilized baseball field, next to an underutilized existing parking lot. And it's, it, it's not gonna stick up.
Trees there.
It's not gonna stick out like a sore thumb.
No, there's no trees on it.
Although it's a large structure, air structure, you're not, it's not gonna be, like, stick out like a sore thumb. I can show, send me an email tomorrow and I'll, I'll send you a map where.
Send all of us, because I'm totally lost.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I'll send.
I'd like to see where it's at.
Just, okay.
Are they, are they, uh, considering any public, outdoor public spaces to, to, you know, like, if, if this thing is between, uh, the parking lot or parking structures and this other vertical element? Are there any public spaces that could be developed, uh, as part of this?
Public spaces as far as?
Uh, plazas, uh, people's spaces, uh, you know, just, just somewhere where people could gather. What's that?
Right. Well, are, are you talking about a natural feature, or are you talking about actually a facility to?
Manmade feature, it'd be an outdoor feature.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a roof. It wouldn't be a roofed-over feature. It would be bordered by this new facility, and whatever is, I, I mean, I'm, again, I don't know exactly where it's being placed and what's around it, but if, if we're talking about starting to pop up vertical elements back there, can we soften the edges, maybe with some plazas or people's spaces or gathering spaces for people?
Or a destination.
Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, uh, you know, some, some nice, some trees, some outdoor lightings, you know, maybe some-
Some water features.
Yeah. Where are we at? Where do we end up here?
Sorry, okay.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Apidian?
Nothing else tonight, thank you.
Huh? I, I had a couple of questions. Um, at the new Fresh Taste of Time, or the-
Fresh Time.
Fresh Time, yeah. Interesting concept. I was looking at it, I guess, um, it's going to be opening soon, and, and beside that, this is where the old Sims store was. Is, do they have to come to, for this, to the city for any approval, or is that just an existing program?
They have to, they don't have to come before the planning commission for site plan approval, because it's, it's a reuse of an existing building, existing space. They had an ad, they had to add a, um, they got overhead door.
Okay.
But, um, so, so we review the site plan, to make sure that it's gonna, it's gonna work and stuff.
No, I think it sounds like a great, both of those two stores, that two, the other one, two that's right beside it.
They have to get building permits, of course.
Yeah.
One other quick question. On Rochester Road, I noticed they started, uh, demol, demolishing the, uh, the old Pro Car Wash. On the east side.
A lot of time.
Yes. Do we know what's gonna go in there, or, or what might?
So it's Pro Car Wash, there's two Pro Car washes, right?
I'm talking about the one on the east side, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be Pro Car Wash.
Says the gas is a dollar eighty-seven a gallon.
It's gonna be Pro Car Wash, they're just, they're just renovating the, the, the gut, the-
Oh, this looks like a complete demolition.
No, no, it's not.
No, it's not? Okay, okay, okay. Brilliant.
Um, I forgot a couple things. Um, May first, Troy Community Coalition has their annual prayer breakfast. Um, Troy Historic Village's, um, event on Tuesday night last week went really well, but it would make, be nice to see more faces. It's a very nice event. Um, it's breakfast, you can make it to work by nine fifteen. Um, next Thursday is the Troy Area Interface Group's National Day Prayer Met. In June, June thirteenth, Troy Historic Village has a birthday celebration for the city of Troy, and June twentieth is the city of Troy's celebration, so mark your calendars. It would be nice to see more of us there.
A lot of big events. Thank you, Podman. That's good. Okay, if there's nothing further, I think we are adjourned.